Thank you.
Becky Lanning.
Mark Schumaker.
Jeff Franco.
Matt Wilber.
Mitch Kite.
Brian Shea.
Tim Wickman.
Scott Belt.
Chad's not coming.
Chad is on fire assignment.
On what?
Fire assignment.
Okay.
I'm not sure exactly where he got signed, if you know.
Uh Wyoming Montana border, Big Horn Mountains.
Cool.
Yeah.
Is it the Big Horn Mountain that burned it down?
Yep.
Awesome.
Lighten them up.
Um.
Did the vet pick up his wigs?
Yeah.
That's just vacation, ain't it?
He takes vacation to go out there.
He told you that.
And they've been so.
I'm guessing this is for me to update you on my conversation with Corby.
Yes.
So, a couple of things, I went and met with him at the American Legion in Carter Lake, um, and just got to talk with him about everything, um, he's going through a lot of like family changes in life, so like his daughter's going to college, um, his son apparently competed to try to run Olympic run or something and busted up his knee real bad up in Oregon, so I, I think a lot of things in his mind are changing, he's looking at retirement, what he wants to do, blah blah. Long story is that he, by the time I was done with that conversation, I pitched him three two, not a penny more, um, that we would close. And I told him one October, but he said if we were to close, it'd have to be pushed to the right a little bit, so he was thinking something more like one November. And just because he needs to get his ducks in a row with his accountant and attorney apparently, and then he said, he asked if we would be able to pay him in two payments, so that way you could spread out the profit, I'm guessing, so that way, you know, he can capture two tax things, I told him that it shouldn't be an issue for us all. Um, but I did say if we did do that, that we would have to close this year, and that he'd be signing this contract, so there would be no way he can back out of the deal. We talked about him having this season to run, um, I told him fifteenth of March, he said he'd like to go to one April, it's probably not a big deal there either. You know, just kind of, and I told him, we just, we weren't real sure, it was just kind of a starting point. And he said that really just depends on the snow and things like that, and I said, well, by the time we close, you're gonna have to know what that date's gonna be. I don't really think two weeks or a month is really gonna matter to us. Very specifically said he did not want to work with you, so, um, he also had some.
That makes me want him to work for you.
I'll pay his accountant.
He, he felt there was some, I don't know, I don't want to go into it, but whatever, I told him it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily need to be an issue, uh, he hasn't really, he expressed a lot of concern about the Nordic, uh, ski patrol or something like that, I don't know anything about them or what they are, and I can kind of explain that to Mark Arty and Chad Grady, but, um, apparently there was a falling out that they had or something, so he just wants them completely left out of the picture, and I just said, that's fine. So during, and I think what we're talking about is this year, that he's, so we, we take ownership, he's running the ski hill, we just keep them guys off. Not a big deal. You know, if we want to deal with him later on, I don't really care, um. Let's see, what else?
Someone working with him?
Oh, the other, he wanted to maintain his employees uh, beyond his time, and I said, we probably would want to do that anyway, just so we can kind of learn the ins and outs of the equipment, you know, so, you know, you might have to bang on the ski lift a certain way or something, I mean, which I don't think that's really gonna be a big deal or a huge cost to us anyway, um. And nor does that have to be like a end all be all, I mean, we can just basically say, yeah, we intend to keep your guys on, and then we let them go, and we let them go, but wait till everything's closed and we own the place. Um, he had a huge concern about making sure that it remains a ski hill, and I told him that was absolutely one of the plans we had, is to keep it going, that we'd probably look for a nonprofit to run the ski hill, and he was all about it, he seemed super happy with that idea and, and then I guess the last thing, I called Brian Shea right after this, so Brian, if you remember anything else, I'm forgetting her now.
Uh.
The other thing is that he, oh shit, what did I say, uh, ski hill, shit. Oh, Labor Day, um, I told him that he needs to give us an answer by, after Labor Day. And I expressed to him, and I was very serious about him, I just said that if he backs out of this deal, I said, here's the deal, the county's only gonna pay you appraised value, or assessed value, appraised value, whatever, market value. And I said, the business aspect of this, I go, realize that on paper, your property's gonna look like it's worth two million dollars, and that's what the county's gonna pay you, and then we're gonna use the Iowa West money as partnering with us to buy your business, so that way we can get around the whole hurdle of um, dealing with the neighbors, and, and maybe that's just what we have to say, but the reality is, is that the neighbors are gonna see that we bought this thing for three two, and then they're gonna say, oh, my value, my land's worth more too, you know, get into that situation, so we need to be all singing on the same sheet of music if he accepts this deal that we bought the property for market value or assessed, appraised value, whatever, and then the rest was the business that we bought. So, uh, but that's, that's really kind of hit in a nutshell, um. You know, I told him that if, if we don't buy this, if, if he says, no, I want more, that we're reallocating that fund and it is gone, we're not gonna visit this ever again, and that all the Iowa West money is gonna go straight towards the tiny homes venture, because that's what Brenda basically said is the money that's up for grabs from Iowa West to partner on this. And so, I made that very clear to him, and when I did that, he kind of got a little nervous, because he was like, oh, you know, because I was like, I'm not, like, we are not gonna revisit this, and I said, I'm probably on the board maybe one more term, and I can assure you that even in this next four to five years, that we're not gonna have this conversation again. And so, he's like, okay. It seems like he wants the county to get it, obviously, he wants to get as much money as he can, anyone that owns property that the county's interested in would, in fairness, but, um, I told him not a penny over three two, so.
Questions, concerns?
Grab a bunch of them.
Yeah, that's what we're here for.
The, uh, Matt, I, if we, if we set the payments over a two-year period, or whatever, two calendar year period.
That means for him, not us, right? It'd still be in the same fiscal year for us.
Can we actually take ownership, still owing him money, that's, that's legal, okay? So when, when you put together a purchase agreement, it's for a piece of property, it's not for employees working, none of that shit. So, that's not gonna be part of the agreement.
Tim, yeah, I should tell you this too, I'm sorry, I meant to say this, that there would be two separate contracts, one for the property acquisition, and one for him continuing to run the ski hill for the year.
And I'm out. I don't want him running anything. Not, not if we're owning it. His employees ran it, I'm not sure he even had much of a part in it, but I'm not in, I'm not in for him running it.
You're, I'm talking for this season, this coming up.
I know, so am I.
Okay, well, I think this personal opinion is that having him out gives us zero time and ability to get someone else in there to run the ski hill this fall and winter.
Employees are doing it, doing it. I don't have a problem keep, trying to keep his employees there.
This was the deal you guys told me to pitch when we left last closed session, that's what I pitched, so if you're changing your mind now, it's totally fine.
I didn't change my mind, go back and listen to the last one, I said, I'm not in favor of him being playing a part in any of this shit. You can, you can, uh, talk to Mark and Jeff right there, I, I, I didn't want him playing a part in anything. When, when he signs that agreement and the property closes, he's out.
Yeah, I, I'm just telling you that's not gonna work on his, on his side, so, i- if that's, if that's your choice, that's totally fine, I'm just telling you, would, I don't really give a shit, I mean, I don't, if we, if we don't get him out, Preston, I don't care, I need to make that clear to everyone. All I'm trying to do is negotiate with someone that doesn't want to negotiate with you guys, so, if we don't do it, we don't do it, is what it is, but I'm just telling you that he,
See how you are, Mark.
His intention was to run the ski hill this, this year, and that's what I left last meeting, um, with the understanding of that. I told him that there would be no way for him to back out after he signed that contract. So, it's not like he could come to April and be like, oh, I had a great, you know, he could have the best year ever this year, he's not gonna be able to come back and say, nope, I'm canceling, you know, that, that's the end of the deal.
So at this point, I might ask, Tim, can you articulate your specific concerns a little bit? And then Matt, can you talk about maybe how we can mitigate those concerns with legal document?
Well, I got my concern too. I just don't think it's worth three two, and if it's such a hot property where nobody seems to be beating down the door, the only person that is beating down the door is us. And we've been beaten on the door a long, long time.
For us, for the conservation board anyway, I don't mean to speak DM, but it, it is a hot property for us. It's important to that acquisition plan.
I understand that.
I just, I, I guess the takeaway I got from you, and maybe I'm missing here, but I mean, I, my understanding was that you were not in a position to run it this fall.
We aren't, we, we wouldn't be able to run it this fall.
Nope.
Or winter, whatever you wanna call it.
The employees could at the ski hill, right?
Yeah, they could, I don't know what kind of support they had from.
Says, well, I wanna run it, fuck, he doesn't, he doesn't do anything.
He's in Colorado most of the time.
Shit, I mean, his employees run it, all he wants to do is be able to.
What does it matter to us? I guess that's what I'm curious like.
We own the property. We want to give him the proceeds for the, for the sale, for the year.
I think that's part of just making the, the price right for him.
This guy doesn't even pay his property tax on a regular basis, how can you trust him collecting money from, from a ski?
I mean.
Adventure, ski park, or ski hills, or, I don't, I don't trust the guy.
His price tag was three five, is what he wants, and I think this, by letting him run this thing, and then he's not paying the property tax on it this year, because we own it, um, that basically gets him closer to his number than he wants, that's why I think this is the, the deal that is on the table.
And again, Tim, I'd like to say, if you can speak to your concerns a little bit, maybe we can have Matt address them and see if, if that will help. If you think you'd be more comfortable that way, if we think we can have the legal backing.
You know, it comes down to trust, I don't trust him.
Agreed.
You know?
Agreed.
If we, if we buy all this stuff, it's our property, it's our equipment, he doesn't give a shit. You know, nobody knows for sure, but I, I, I would be willing to bet that he skims a lot of cash off of that. That's cash that should come to Potawatomi County if it's run by his employees. So why would we give him that opportunity to steal from us? For lack of a better word. And, um, as I said, I don't trust the guy, I've never even met him. I know he doesn't pay his property tax on a regular basis. If we're gonna own something, we're either going to let his employees run it without his, uh, participation, or we shut it down for the year. Or, or I'm not gonna.
I just, I don't think that's good for the community up there at all, to shut it down.
I kinda, I, I'm not so worried about the community, other than the fact that a continuation of running something, if you shut it down, it does concern me as for the ongoing operation.
I did say to him that, that when, to your point you're talking about, I did say to him that if he were to make this deal, that we would have our county employees going over there to learn the ropes. And he was fine with that.
If, just for sake,
Sure.
if we were to do a two-piece purchase, would we lease that to him this year, and would he carry the liability this year?
You can arrange it a lot of different ways, I mean, I, I view this as a two, sort of a two-part contract, one is the purchase price, and one is the business, you know, price. I mean, I understand Tim's concerns certainly.
Sure.
But it's not a lot different than you buy a, a business park, and then you rent it out to people, you don't really have a say so in how they do or do not run their business, I mean, that's the way I'm looking at it as. I think Tim's looking at it as, we buy it, it's ours, it's our ski hill, and I'm like, well, that depends, if you buy the ski, if you buy the property, then you're basically just a landlord, I mean, that's, I think that's the arrangement he wants, is sort of a landlord relationship for a year, while he, you know, runs it. Um, and so it would be, it wouldn't be even that much different than you go to buy a house and you're not ready to move out, so people will sell the house, and then they have a lease back, you know, for that period of time, so, you know, it sounds to me like, yes, I mean, you absolutely, you can't probably completely eliminate, um, the chance of liability because you own it, um, but we could certainly structure any contract that he has to provide a certificate of insurance that essentially insulates us, you know, that he's got a requirement to indemnify us or anything.
If we do that, I would like to have a continuous check of that insurance.
Sure.
Or if you want a premium to be paid, I mean, honestly, you'd have, you'd have to negotiate a deal where he has a prepaid premium throughout the operating season, he has to turn over the certificate of insurance or a copy of it to us, so that we know that that's covered. Then, I mean, I think you're, you know, so, there's plenty of ways to, to structure a trust issue.
I just wonder if he would get the insurance, throw it to us, then he backs out of it.
I don't think it's gonna be any different what he's currently doing with the insurance he's already has to have, I mean, it's just, we have to verify that it's paid out through the end of the policy or something, you know.
If you view it as he's running a county business, then the trust issue's a big deal. If you view it as, I'm his landlord for a season, if he screws over Uncle Sam or the State of Iowa Department of Revenue because he's skimming money, it's really not our problem, that's an issue for him with Department of Revenue. So, I mean, that's, it's honestly just, you know, I have no problem getting an agreement structured that sort of takes care of the liability issues, you know, those issues. Um, you know, pretty much the only risk that I don't know that we can completely mitigate is only like, I mean, if he doesn't maintain the equipment for the year, you know, I mean, those types of issues, we'll have to deal with that on the back end, I mean, I'd, there's really no way to completely eliminate that one.
I don't think we're gonna run into that if we were to, if we go down this path, because we're keeping his employees.
Sure.
A year, maybe not, but they're not gonna want to screw themselves knowing that they're gonna have to deal with this stuff later.
Mark and Jeff, I want to hear what you guys say.
Well, we have been trying to get this for a while. I mean, when we were, the reason he doesn't want to negotiate with probably me or Jeff is that we saw kind of through his bullshit, pretty much.
That's it?
Um, I mean, when we first started this, he was at four and a half, five million is what he wanted for that place. And when we were valuing it, it was down around two million.
Was that with the houses?
That was with everything, yeah.
He did say something about a building was left completely off of one of the appraisals. And then he like, he actually had paper there and showed it to me, I don't, it looked like a big shed of some kind, that your appraiser completely left off, and he showed me, or, because I gave him his copies, and he showed me this piece of, of this building, and it was indeed not on there. So we missed, and he, he claims it's worth like a hundred and some thousand dollars, but I don't, I don't believe that, but either way.
Behind the lodge?
But the problem is, it was still missed, so that is concerning to me, is like, point of contention with him is like, well, you missed stuff on your appraisal, which did happen, so, I don't, I don't, I mean.
He could have, he could have gotten an appraisal too, if he didn't like ours. Mark, do you trust him?
Corby? I don't trust Corby.
Jeff, do you trust Corby?
No.
Brian, do you trust him?
No.
I mean, I guess, what, how's that be relevant here for, this is the deal, it's on the table, you either take it or you don't. I mean, I don't really care, because he has to sign a contract, which makes it legal, and there, no one's gonna get away from Matt Wilber. So, I'm not really that worried about it. I mean, the terms of this, now, Tim, I think where if, if we paid three and a half million dollars and he ran it this year, it would have to be all the proceeds going back to the county. His price tag is three two, with him continuing to run it for his last season, we have to keep his employees, get rid of the Nordic people, we pay him over the course of two calendar years, so that he can take advantage of the IRS tax, you know, thing, because if he got three two paid this year, for example, he's gonna be taxed on that as income for this, this, this calendar year, if he can split it up, he can spread that out a little.
The Nordic people, didn't you say they're up at the Hitchcock now?
Yeah, they're not even associated with the ski hills anymore.
They won't be issued for this year. It's not even a concern.
I can legally handle any trust issues, I'm, I'm honestly, and that's, I, you go into any business agreement with the thought that you're getting screwed over by the person you're going into business by, and you write the contract to, uh, avoid those, you know, contingencies, and that's, the, I'm not, those I'm not concerned about. Ultimately, his decision is, whatever three of you agree to, three of you agree to it, then I'll make the documents work, three of you don't agree to it, then I don't have to worry about it, and I go work on other files.
Do you feel it's the right move to let him run it this year?
Again, and I, I've got confidence in Matt and his team, that we can legally protect ourselves, yeah, I do, or we are not in a position to step in and run this, even if it's his employees.
Now, we've, we've got a hundred thousand to study, right, and that's gonna take a little while. What do you think of those same questions?
Um, I agree with Jeff.
There ain't no way we could run it. And I think it's bad to shut it down and let it sit. I, I truly do, because there's a certain amount of business that comes to that hill. And if we shut it down for a year, that's not gonna come back a hundred percent.
I, I mean, I, I'm frustrated with the cost, but since Iowa West is on board, it makes me feel a little better, because about a third of it is not.
So we're at one four from Iowa West?
Yeah, but I don't know if of that one four is a hundred thousand, that four is.
There's a one five and a hundred thousand.
I don't, Tim, you were on that conversation on Iowa West, do you remember?
Yeah, but I haven't been in contact with Brenda's since.
Their, their total was one point four five, and that was for half of the acquisition plus the cost of a hundred thousand dollar study.
Yeah.
So we're at one three five. There, Matt.
I mean, that, that, I feel a little better, because not all the county money's on the line, you know, because if, at the end of the day, if we, if this whole venture doesn't work out, you know, we sell all that back to whoever, I mean, we're gonna get our two million back out of it.
If Mother Nature doesn't cooperate this year, then what?
He's still out, he signed the contract, he's out.
It's his deal.
No, I'm just saying.
Doesn't change anything for us.
So we're about one point eight, don't they?
Screw us, it's next year when we have a nonprofit.
Well, he doesn't get his money, or get his ability to get extra money.
If he agrees to sign the contract, doesn't matter, you know? I, I, it's, it's just hard, because like, I get it, like, you guys all don't like Corby, and I completely understand why, but on the flip side, if your goal is owning this property, these are the terms to own it, and we either take it or we don't. I mean, it's not like, I don't, it doesn't have to be personal, I'm looking at it super black and white, like, okay, this property acquisition, we were paying way too damn much for it, but a third of it is coming from Iowa West, so it's really not costing the county that much. So, you know, if we don't take the deal, Iowa West's money basically goes away, we might be able to tap it into other projects, but it's gone, it's off the table.
Here's what I feel.
Our two million can go to something else.
It's a, it's a big bite, and it sucks about the money, but I think the potential for the conservation to take this land and do what I've seen is incredible. Yeah, it's gonna take some time and some investment, but this could be a huge payoff for our county. I for one am for it.
I think there's a few things to balance here, one of those is just that, the potential of this property. Um, the cost is, is a bit of an issue, but we've had this discussion before, I feel, where if we miss this opportunity this time, and we know that we want this for the county, this comes up again, who knows when, what is the price tag at that time? What does that do for us, do we even have a board of supervisors that might support it? By now, we, we have.
That could become a development too, up there, w- without us buying it.
And there's a lot of things that could happen.
Mm-hmm, it'd be hard to develop in the low sales. And that overlay.
Well, we don't know anything until he makes the decision whether or not he's even gonna take it, maybe we need to have this conversation after we know that. However, Jeff, um, you know, do you know how much he made off of the ski hills last year?
I can only guess.
Do you know how much he made off of it the year before?
Can only guess.
How about any year in the last twenty?
I don't know.
So are we giving him a million, another million? In sales, is it one point five?
For the actual cost, what we think the actual cost is?
For what he's making off this year of running it for free. What if? And you know, when you say it costs a lot of money, and they may never have this again, we have to, we still have to think ahead. We have millions of dollars of expenses yet to go, once we even acquire the property. You know, I mean, two years ago, three years ago, whatever it was, the lists are obsolete, you can't even get parts for them, right? You have to go to, God, you have to go to a a miller or somewhere to get the parts made. I mean, so, Jesus Christ, even to keep it running costs a fortune, could cost us a fortune. So, I mean,
I think it just depends on what your goals are, like, what you have in mind, you know, like, is is it gonna become a county-owned ski hill we profit off of, because I look at it like, we're expanding our park, we're gonna rent out the ski hill to a nonprofit, we don't really care what the ski hill does at that point. That's up to the nonprofit to make their money or not.
All right, then we lease it to him.
But we've, that's what we would do.
For.
Not to Corby, yeah, that's not gonna happen, unless we pay him three five.
Well, you know, we were at, uh, two point six last year, or two years ago, none of the equipment changed very much, everything got older, those Polestar jet skis.
His two properties doubled in value, which I did check now.
Oh, fuck, they didn't double in value?
They absolutely doubled in value, you can go on the Sessors website.
There's, there's a bunch of half million dollar homes out there.
At this point, if Corby's running it, I'm out. I don't give a shit what the price is.
I don't, like I said before, I mean, it, I just don't see where the door's burning down, or people, somebody's gonna come and bail him out. I just don't, I mean, could be totally wrong, but he's, we're the only fish in the pond at this point.
Man, how do you feel about it?
I'm against it. It's too much money, and there'd be after costs, and I'm not in favor of it.
So I guess the last question then is, do we want to wait till he comes back, says yes, and no, and visit this again, or do we want me to tell him, hey, the deal's off?
I think you gotta tell him that it's off unless, if he's in it, because what I'm hearing is, is that you've got two votes for yes with the deal as proposed, two votes for no, basically regardless of the deal proposed, because the money's too high, and one vote contingent on Corby being out, that's, I'm just doing the math, so, if, I would say that the, that's the position, if he's, if that's a requirement, then, um, then he needs to know. Maybe he blinks, maybe he doesn't.
Matt, you're a taxpayer, what do you think?
I like the project, Tim, I mean, honestly, I mean, it's, you know, looking at that, I'm, I'm, you have downsides that you can control, you have upsides that could be, I mean, could be minimal, could be great. Um, so that's what I'm looking at it as, worst case scenario is, you end up in the craps, you know, crap ski hill organization, and you've greatly expanded the Hitchcock footprint, I mean, that's like worst case scenario for you. Um, with Iowa West basically eating the cost, maybe it's grossly inflated for the business. Um, I mean, if I was going to buy a business, obviously, I want to see good financials, I want to see all of that stuff, but I basically have Iowa West saying, they'll pony that money up, so is he getting a great deal, or is he getting a crap deal? I don't know, I don't care, because Iowa West is eating it, I mean, that's where I'm looking at it from. If you're asking me, do we have to buy this for three two, and we have no help, I'd want a lot more information on his profitability, um, you know, on the, on the business.
But that's Iowa West's, um, mantra a lot of times is, you know, we, they build it, and then you figure out how to run it for, forever, and, I mean, you look at the stuff they've done, i.e. the Mack, and what it costs to run that forever, and
It's just, it's, it's a tough call, like I said, financially, I mean, if, when you don't trust the guy, that's a problem, right?
I mean, we're not, we, we even know what a new, um.
Land, they ain't making any more of it? You know, I mean, land.
Ninety-five acres?
Eighty, is it?
It's closer to a hundred.
With the two homes?
Eight, two homes, is that right, Mark?
Yeah.
What, what would the cost of putting in new state-of-the-art equipment? What, what would the cost of putting in new state-of-the-art equipment?
It, it would be probably a million dollars to lift, something along those lines.
But we may not have to do that, we might be able to lease that to some other company to do all those things. I guess the way I'm looking at it is like, this is technically like two million dollars of county money to get a hundred acres to expand our parks. I don't really care if there's a ski hill there or not.
And that's what, to your question, Tim, that's sort of the way I'm looking at it, if you're asking me the taxpayer thought is, that's, I think Hitchcock's a great facility and whether or not the, it's got a going concern on it or not. It's just a unique opportunity to acquire it for roughly, maybe a little under two million.
The study's gonna tell us what the profitability could be, you know, they're gonna tell us what we may or may not be able to.
And, and you know, I think we would probably all be fine if he, if we were just gonna buy it, he's going away. And if it, if it has to sit for a year, then so be it. I'd rather have it, a new, showing new owners, new equipment, get rid of the stigmatism and, and do that rather than, uh.
I would love to talk to a couple of his employees, you know, and see what they think of running the damn thing. I guess I feel, I do feel.
I want them gone, I want us to start over and be done with all of them.
So if we do agree to three-two and he's gone, do we make two payments on this?
He's, he's not gonna, listen, I pitched, I told you what I pitched to him, so if he comes back and says yes, we can't go back and say, oh, nope, we don't want you.
Yeah, we can, they do it all the time, Justin.
Other option.
The team thing, you buy, they do.
Other option is you just don't throw it off the table and you deal with this in April. I'm just throwing out, that's another, uh, you know, option, nobody wants to do that. But if the theory is, I don't wanna do a deal where Corby is still involved in it, then you just go back to him at the end of the season and say, now you're done. But the problem with that is, of course, we don't have the year of experience to.
And we don't have the Iowa West money at that point, creation.
No, Iowa West money is like, and Mitch was at that meeting, she basically said that you need to figure this out now, so I, I don't know what.
That's one of the biggest pressures.
Well, it sounds to me like maybe the irresistible force has met the immovable object, so I mean, you either, uh, you know, cope with Corby being involved or, uh, um, or just move down the road.
I mean, I.
I got plenty of work to do, so it's not like I need to be working on that agreement, but.
You had your trip and no way to reschedule and stuff, but I just, I wish you could've talked to the guy, because I feel like you're, you're basically going through what I'm saying secondhand and you're not getting a good sense of what you're really up against. You know, and I think that that would've been more beneficial if you could've talked to the guy.
I think there should've been two people at that meeting, I really do.
Sounds like he's looking to, you know, just beyond this, he's looking to possibly sell, he's got a home in Carter Lake too. I think he's gonna consolidate, sell it off and go to Colorado.
He is, that's where his parents are from, right?
And they own the ski stuff out there.
You know.
They own most of Vale, I believe.
We don't even know if he's gonna take the three-two.
Yeah, you're right, he might not.
And you know, and.
I was just trying to.
You and I can have a candid frank conversation, but I don't really give a shit about Corby. I don't give a shit if he's selling his house and moving to Colorado, I don't really give a shit. I have three people here that know him and I, I, I don't know him.
I've had, I've had business dealings with him.
That don't trust him. Jesus, man.
But at no point did he had, did he sign a dotted line that we now have an attorney that's gonna be up his ass to tell him, you're not backing out, it's over. You know, like, and we never got to that point, we never got to the point where he would agree.
Would you go back to another meeting?
With who?
With Corby.
We'll wait to see what he says at the three-two.
Well, I think there's some, I, I guess my thinking is if we go there and tell him three-two, you're out. Then at the, and if he agrees to that, then we talk to the employees.
I said not a damn penny more, it ain't happening, you know, and I think his whole thing was, well, if I can run this ski hill one more year, you know, he, he, he wants three-five. But if he, but hear me out, so he's not paying property taxes, now we own it. He's getting paid over the course of two years, so his income tax situation can be better. You know, he could have potentially the best year ever, which gets him closer to the three-five that he really wants. And then he's locked the door and gone, we own this thing. And whether or not we keep his employees or not, I mean, we don't have to do that, I mean, we may or may not, I think there's value in having them to kinda show us how that particular equipment runs. But we have the ability to potentially lease it out to a totally different company that's gonna say, no way, I want, I want all-new lifts, I want all-new this, we want a five-year lease with the county for X dollars. You know, and then we've accomplished the goal of expanding Hitchcock, because not all of that ski hill is usable land. Sounds like Chad has some pretty good ideas for the Buffalo on part of that ground. There's a lay-down yard that has potential to maybe do RV type things. We have a study that's coming that can tell us what we really can do to make money, so I mean, there's a ton of potential there at a real price tag to the county of about two million dollars. And we can wait six months to get rid of Corby.
This is something, I, I hate to see us do this, but if we got, if we really got in trouble, we got two properties we could sell for a half million.
That's, yes.
I, I, I don't think it's the right thing to do, but I mean, that's a, that's our backup.
Matt, how do you write a deed and have, or a contract, and have him a purchase agreement, let me say that? Have him agree to it, receive half the funds and have him sign a deed that we own it.
You do that every time you buy a house, I mean, you get a mortgage, promissory note, I mean, there's a bit financing, you know, structuring the financing of the deal. I mean, that's, I don't know, but that's an issue at all.
Well, that's a month-to-month thing with the bank.
No, but you can sign up, and we've done that, you know, with these, you know, ten-year forgivable promissory notes, you know, these, you know, deals that we've done before. They're taken trital immediately and we're just, you know, structuring out the forgiving their payments, you know, as they go. You would just set up a deal with a, with a promissory note at the same time, half due upon closing, half due January two, um, you know, and that's it. If he felt like he needed to have some sort of security involved in that, then you whip up a mortgage, you know, that goes along with it. So I mean, that's not, honestly, that's the easy part of this deal. You know, you know, the tougher part is how do you, you know, deal with the business and, you know, and all of those things. But I'm not, the financing and how it's paid and structuring it, that's not complex. It's just making sure you got your right paperwork and get it recorded, so. That's the easy, honestly, that, that's the part I don't feel like challenged by, that's easy.
I'm not gonna do anything until we hear.
Okay, what, what kind of.
Why would we?
What kind of a group, a nonprofit group would wanna go run that?
You have one, don't you? You, you pitched a name before about.
Or is it? Actually runs one up in Sioux Falls.
Yeah, the great, we, we have an example of a very similar arrangement between a city and a nonprofit that runs the Great Bear Ski Resort up in Sioux Falls.
So they, they do it for no money?
For the nonprofit, I mean, they, they cover their costs, that's it.
What happens with the profits?
We're, we're getting way down the road on this, we, we haven't even got this thing, we don't even have three votes to buy it right now.
No, and I mean, he could come back and say no too, so I mean, I, I, but I just. I guess I need everyone to make sure we understand what we're talking, I mean, his price tag, we want him to go away is three-five. You know, it's just hard, because like, we started this thing with the goal of getting the hill and then it's like, well, we all hate Corby and it's like, okay, I get it, but do we want the hill or not? You know, do you want the property or not? If we don't, fine, let's take that two million, go buy.
I'm in favor of Justin.
Two million, I don't understand.
So, I don't like, I don't like Corby, but that ain't part of this, I think the potential is unrealized by everybody in this room. Including you guys, till we get the study back, this could just blossom.
So I guess, I just want to know, do we have the agreement to wait till what Corby says, can we at least do that and then revisit it?
I'm okay with that.
Okay, and then, I'm not gonna say nothing.
Sure, he wants, he wants us to have it, I'm, I'll be willing to see if he does want us to have it. He says, uh.
Do you feel, Justin, you're the one to talk to him, do you feel like you led him to believe that that deal is gonna be approved? Because if you did, I think you probably should reach out to him and tell him, I don't know that that, just FYI, I don't know that that deal will be approved. I mean, I think he should know that.
Yeah, I mean, I, the, yeah, more or less, I basically said that that's kinda what we agreed to, so that's fair, and I can do that.
I'm just saying, I'd be, if I were him, trust or not, I would definitely be pissed if you went to him and said, um, hey, this is what the county's terms are, and he's like, okay, fine, I'll take it. Sorry, that's not what the county's terms are, I would be, I would be pissed.
That's part of my frustration with this whole conversation, to be honest with you.
Well, we never talked at all about before two payments or really, I don't know that there was three people that wanted to let him stay and run it.
So I, I mean, we can go back and look at the tape, but I remember.
I would, I would ask that you do, because don't, don't, I mean, I know you're not accusing me, but I specifically said that I, I am.
I remember this.
In favor of Corby running anything.
I also remember leaving saying, and following up and restating what our offer was to him, you told me three million dollars not to exceed three-two and that he would run it for the year, that was part of that conversation, I remember following up and asking that. So I'll go watch the tape and do it again, but I'm just trying to tell you guys that, like, that's the deal that I pitched to the guy. And, and he came back and said, well, that's cool, but can you pay me over the course of two years? And I'm like, yeah, it doesn't, it does not affect us when or how we pay him, it doesn't matter.
I don't think that's a big deal.
It really doesn't, it doesn't affect anything other than maybe we pay Iowa West first and then our money second, I mean.
Think we oughta go, does it with him again?
I just worry that, you know, this is what happened last time and this is what he said happened last time, is we put so much goddamn pressure on him that he just said, no, I'm out. And I don't wanna go down that path again.
That's not what happened.
Well, that's the way he feels about it, so I.
His communication skills are, on a scale of one to zero to ten.
Yeah, you've never met the guy, never talked to him, so it's hard for you, I don't know how you say that.
I've seen the email chains from Mark and Jeff. The guy's an asshole.
I mean, we all can be assholes sometimes, so.
No problem.
It, it just, I don't.
I go back to the potential.
Maybe my frustration is I don't wanna feel like I'm wasting my damn time, we're, if we're not gonna do this, I don't wanna, I don't waste my time, I don't give a shit.
It ain't really about wasting your time, you're putting your deal.
Hours dealing with this guy to get to this point and now we're like, no, no deal, so it's frustrating. Because trust me, I have other things I would much rather be doing than dealing with him.
It's the same frustrations we've had, we did it for two years, well, trying to get to the point we were at.
We're so close right now, we're, we're really close, you guys.
I think the, the real encouraging thing for me here is, is Matt's confidence in being able to mitigate the risk of working with Corby for a year, for one more season. Because that, that is a concern, but we can mitigate that. And if it's the price tag, that's the, the sticking point here, that's one thing. But we were, I felt like people in the room were on a, a similar page with three-two as high as we wanted to go, and we're, and we're there. With mitigated risk, allowing him to run it, so it's encouraging that way.
Shit, what if that, what if that thing makes a half million dollars a year?
I mean, I don't know, the, the other problem we're gonna face, no matter what, is that if we acquire, even if we go through this whole deal, there's still gonna be, you know, fifteen, whatever many properties over there on the other side by the river that are saying, you still haven't bought me out and you bought a goddamn park. And then this whole board is gonna have to deal with that fallout, so I mean, it, it's, there's a lot going into this too that.
Well, we didn't build a house down in the flood plain either.
No, and I'm, I'm fine saying that, it's just.
I mean, shit.
Well, you're right, and they had the opportunity to get bought out, two-eleven, didn't they?
Exactly, shit, they were saying, oh, it'll never happen again, here it happened again, and now they're going, where's my money?
Well, what did they say about the money for this, Iowa West money?
Well, like I said, we were sitting in the meeting and basically she goes, hey, this money is earmarked for you, but it's not gonna be earmarked much longer at all. Like, we have other things that it needs to go to, or people are asking for it, it's gonna get used. Well, could be another, worth another conversation with Brenda and just say, here's the situation, I mean, I'm just looking at it as, right now, what I'm hearing is two votes no, nothing. Two votes yes, do it, one vote only if Corby's out. And you could satisfy that concern by getting Corby, I mean, just by cutting this deal in April after the season's over with and then, you know. Maybe you could work out a deal where he agrees to let somebody shadow him for this season, even though we're not buying it yet. Um, you could do something like that, but that, that only works if Iowa West's money is still available and on the table in April, if they say no.
I was in the sense it was not.
Yeah, and when we had that conversation, Brenda, keep in mind, Brenda was, used to be on conservation board at one point in time or was there for a while, so. I think she wants to see this go through too, but when we talked, the whole reason we were talking to Brenda was about tiny homes for homeless vets, and we just basically just kinda letting her know our idea. And she basically said that if we're gonna go down and ask Iowa West for money, that if it was not for wraparound services, that that one-point-four-five is the pot of money and we're gonna be taking that from, and I was like, yeah, that's not happening, so. That, I mean, that's where that's at, I don't know, it's just, sorry, man, like.
So we wait a week or two?
On the same page, and that was hard and.
Can you do, can you do like a condition, like a, the equipment type of contract where, so you know, you have the one-point-six, you pay him now, then on April fifteenth, he's gone, go, hey, things aren't destroyed, you get your whole one-point-six for, hold this ski hill, it is destroyed. It gets to be cumbersome, but it's not something we can't handle, I mean, you gotta get a good handle on what's there and just make sure you include it all, it's, I mean, it's like when you buy a house. You've gotta sometimes say, these fixtures go, these don't, I mean, it would take some inventorying to do that, but as long as it's in the, I said, all of those things are more logistical issues, not legal issues. I can't get around, I mean, if you don't want him involved, then he says he has to be involved and Iowa West says, well, this has to be done at this time, I mean, sort of those, I mean, somebody has to blink or the deal just falls apart. But in terms of if the concern is, I just wanna make sure we're protected, I mean, I'm not, I feel fairly confident, especially, I guarantee you, Iowa West will wanna make sure that those I's are dotted and T's are crossed before they pony up their one-point-four. So I mean, between Iowa West and us, I'm not concerned about those, I mean, those are issues I absolutely feel confident we can deal with. But if the deal is, I just don't wanna do it, I don't have to worry about it, that's the political question, that's not a legal question, I don't need to be involved, I don't, uh, at all, right? I can solve, uh, yeah, well, that's, you know, I don't wanna be on the board. I'll make, I'll make my high-level decisions on case at a time, you get to deal with your.
There you go.
Tim, does that set your mind at ease at all about working with Corby?
Pardon me?
Does that set your mind at ease at all about working with Corby should things go through, that we can mitigate risk, you just don't wanna work with him, period, regardless of risk?
I think, Justin, I'd reach out to him and at least give him that heads up, because otherwise, he's gonna be pissed, I guess maybe he don't care, but.
I don't think he should be pissed, we didn't, we never discussed two payments whatsoever, that was never discussed, whatever.
Yeah, but I, I also said that wouldn't be a big deal at all.
And it's not a big deal, I mean, honestly, if that's what you're using to hang your hat on, it's not gonna, it doesn't matter, I guess if things are gonna fall apart, but that's, that's easier for us.
We never discussed letting him stay or, or run it either.
Well, I don't think he's gonna come back and say yes, I mean, just based on what I, the dealings I've already had with him. He, at one point, oh, that was the other thing, he did say without the two homes, he was at like two-nine-seven without the two homes.
I talked to Chad Gravy about it, Chad doesn't want any part of it if we don't get those two.
So I talked to Chad Gravy the other day at the football field, and, yeah, he said the same thing about the two houses. He did feel that we were paying too much, and I did explain to him the Iowa West thing and he's like, yeah, no big deal.
I think we all want the two homes. I'm just using it as a backup.
They're nice, but.
If we go to fail, we gotta have.
This is funny, because I almost feel like you need to set up like a mediation like we do when we're in a lawsuit, because I feel like there's a temperature to get the deal done, but everybody sort of has, uh, has different, you know, criteria for, uh, you know, for getting it.
Can we get him here?
In front of the board?
Uh, uh, do we wanna do that?
If you did, you don't want, you would definitely want Iowa West to be a part of that same conversation.
Then you probably don't want me in the room. Because I just call it, you know, when I, I tell the truth, I call it as I see it, and, you know. I, I think this, I think he's a goddamn crook and I don't trust him, one lick, and, and I just don't want him any part of it. And three-five is too goddamn much money, three-two is too much money, to be quite honest with you. But if we can get it done at three-two and he moves on down the road, well, yeah.
Maybe it's best to see what he says.
Yeah.
You're the one who was talking to Justin, so I guess.
Yeah, no, I mean, I can't, I just think he's gonna tell us to go bounce in and it's over.
You don't have to worry about it, then these, this has all been a moot point.
Yeah, I know, and.
But who did he co, who did he contact to come back this time? Was it you?
To come back, what do you mean?
To come back, I mean, we, whatever, a year, a few years ago, we.
Mark and I met with him at breakfast. When you were there, I'm sorry.
Jeff was emailing and texting, okay, so what's, we were just kinda wondering what was going on, and I texted him. Then finally, I think he probably got ahold of you.
He called me.
Called you, yeah. They called Brian.
Corey, you guys were communicating with him earlier in the year?
A little bit, yeah.
Okay.
But he didn't respond to Jeff, so I responded to him.
And he text you back?
Yeah, and then he got ahold of Brian, and then we kinda. Started communicating a little bit.
We went to breakfast.
You know, and I, and I had the conver, I'll be honest, I had the conversation with him about, you know, we don't want your frickin' pole start. Snowmobiles and shit, we don't care about any of that stuff, and, you know, and I go, if that's what you're putting all this value on, like, realize that we don't care. And and he was like, no, and that's what brought the conversation about this building that was missing from the appraisal, and I was like, what do you mean, we, how do we miss a building? And then he pulls out the documents and shows me, and I'm like, well, shit. It was a shop, it was a shop, looked like a big, like, garage of some kind, like a steel building looking thing. It was not even on the appraisal at all.
Could you tell if it was part of the ski hills or was it the shop?
I don't, I don't know, I wouldn't know anyway.
Big shop, had one of the houses.
That might be what it was then. I didn't just.
I thought he walked the appraiser all, all through the place.
He did, they had everything.
He was okay with everything two years ago and she won six, he just never, ever hanged the deal.
He was kinda okay, he kept adding stuff on. He had a repair that he, he had to do on one of the ski lifts that he wanted us to pay for. There was equipment that he wanted to keep, I mean, it just kept going.
Started nickel and diming here and there.
I mean, the fact that he wants to continue to run it for a year tells me one of two things, and I'm not saying that they're great, it's just one of two things. Number one, this legitimately earns hundreds of thousands a year in profit. Um, and he wants to, uh, to be able to get that, which is good news if we wanna take it over. That you have a going concern that is likely to turn a profit. Option two is that he thinks he can steal enough to make, uh, you know, to get his three hundred thousand he wants out of it. Um, I feel like I can mitigate the downside risk of, uh, you know, of making sure that that doesn't happen, or at least that we've got some remedies if he, if he's trying to, I don't know. Skim equipment or whatever. Um, I feel like I can handle that. You know, hopefully it's the other side, uh, that it's actually a, you know, something that makes several hundred thousand a year profit.
Jeff, at the other deal, he was ready to walk, wasn't he?
What do you mean at the other deal?
Was he the two, six, five? He was gonna walk away?
That, he he did walk away from two, six, five, and we were.
No, 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 he, was he gonna walk away?
Oh, yes.
From the ski hills?
Yes, he was.
That's why I go back to this, I think he had such an incredible year last year, he wants to repeat that.
Well, how do you blame the guy? I mean, if his price tag's three, five, and then he can have an incredible year and make more than three, five out of the whole deal, I don't know. From a business sense, that's smart, but.
For him.
But our goals are, what are we actually losing here? We're gaining a two million dollar property, we're gaining.
Whatever the value of this property is, and a cost for us of two million, so.
And for, for this business, you can't go year by year.
Right.
Because if you go over like a five-year period, he had, he had to have at least three, probably very bad years in there.
Sure.
So I, you can't, I mean, and that's something that we struggled with, we wanted to see the financials over a three- or five-year period, we wouldn't.
I tried to get you guys out of this ski hill mindset, like, do you want Hitchcock expanded with this extra acreage or not? And is, for us, it's a two million dollar deal, whether or not the ski hill exists down the road or not, gives a shit. Is it worth two million to you to expand Hitchcock?
Part of the initial deal with this, when we pitched it both to this board and to the Iowa West Foundation Board, was that. The option may be that we wipe the slate clean out there. It just becomes part of Hitchcock Nature Center. And it's for hiking, and we can do low-impact, four-season opportunities out there. But that, it may not be profitable as a ski hill, but it, the primary purpose of this, protecting the resource and growing Hitchcock Nature Center. And anything beyond that is a bonus. And there, there's probably likelihood that there will be a bonus there somewhere, we just don't know what that is just yet.
I mean, is it worth two million to you?
Jeff.
All of you, I mean, cause that's basically our cost.
He never wanted to show us numbers.
Which is a telltale sign to me that.
He claimed, so I asked about that, cause I was curious, he claims that he's willing to show us the financials, but we have to go to him. He didn't wanna email it over, cause he had concerns about his competitors finding out what the deal was. And he flat out said, if you wanna come see my financials, you can come over anytime and see him, and I'm like, I don't wanna do that, cause I don't know what I'm looking at.
It's tough too, because you assume that his books, I mean, it's like trying to buy a bar.
They're crooked.
You know, I mean, it's just, I mean, that's, you know, I remember when I was in private practice, I won't say the lawyer that said it to me. But they'd say, when you're going to buy a bar, you'll go in with the mindset that you have to steal from day one. Uh, because if you start stealing too late, then, uh, you've already got the, you know, then the tax man is on you, so those, uh. Those are the, you know, that's just the mindset of hiding cash and money. Um, and so that's why those are always tough, it's, it's, it's fine to have the business, right, when you wanna sell the business. It looks like it hadn't made a profit in twenty years because, uh, they've been, you know, using it to, you know. Get away from paying taxes, you know, for that period of time, so. That's why you use things like car counts and tra, you know, traffic in and out to try to reconstruct what you figure is the actual income.
We got those numbers from him.
Right.
It's a lot tougher, it's getting tougher every year because of the fact that there's not much cash in those businesses like there was.
Well, COVID was huge for him because it was outdoors and so many people had the ability to go do something, you know, cause everyone else was locked down. And so it was huge for him, he had his best year, he said that. And I think he thinks he's gonna have another great year, and I think his price tag is three, five, so if he's able to have a ski hill, not pay taxes, get paid over the course of two years. He gets closer to that three, five number, we get ours for three, two, technically two, and we move on.
I, that's how I'm sort of looking at it, is the, is the, is owning the property worth two million dollars? If that answer is yes, honestly, I'm, I'm, I sort of have the idea, we need to protect ourselves best we can. But we don't really need to worry our pretty little heads about it, because it's Iowa West risk, they're the ones that are, that are paying the premium for all that other stuff. And if it works for us, great, if it doesn't, we still got it for, you know, two million.
At, at two point six, the property and the equipment really wasn't worth it?
Yeah, I don't know, I could.
It was just a matter of.
I know nothing about the numbers, so.
So now, two years later, nine hundred thousand dollars or more, a million dollars or more, wasn't worth it back then. Really, I mean, think about it, when we had our appraisal, we weren't at two, six.
Yeah, and I mean, internist, market value, and I'm not saying it covers the whole spread, but market values did go up.
I'm, I'm gonna, I'll be with you with that, but not a million dollars.
Maybe not a million dollars.
Total appraisal, the first time it was done, was about two, seven, five, with everything included that first time.
Yeah, I don't know any of those numbers, I just think at, at certain, you know, if, if he accepted this deal. You know the county is all in for somewhere just shy of two million dollars. Iowa West covers the rest, so if the property is worth just shy of two million dollars to you, then it's a good deal. If the property is not worth that, then it's not a good deal. I don't know those answers, I'm not, that's not lawyer questions. That's more real estate agent questions, I don't know, but I mean, I, that's the way I'm looking at it.
Be just under one point nine, right?
Yeah, so whatever that's.
Our part is a hundred acres that are not worth two million dollars, and it's not tell, like, so it's not like, but again, it's, what's your goal, you know, what's your goal?
Don't make any more land.
No, I understand, but.
So let's wrap this up.
Is that a priority?
What are we gonna do? We can, we can bat this round all afternoon.
Just, just for the sake that I don't wanna waste any more of my time in this effort, I would ask us all that we just wait to make any decisions on this. Until after we hear back from him as to whether or not he agrees to those terms. He comes back and says, yep, three, two, here's my terms, we visit it and decide if it's worth it or not.
That's what I would do.
And move on, cause then at least I know that I've negotiated as far as I can get, and then I don't feel like an asshole for coming back and saying, well, let's change your minds.
Okay.
Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
See what his terms are. You know?
Yeah, he might come back and say, no, I want three, three, and say, well, deal's off, sorry, peace out, we move on, we'll take that two million. Put a million of it to the arrowhead, between the arrowhead, I mean, I don't, I don't give a shit, I mean.
Yeah, maybe he walks away, he blinks and he comes back and says, I'll take three. I doubt it, but it's possible, you know, as Scott pointed out, maybe.
I told him, I said, if we can't come to agreement, then we just shake hands and we'd move on, and I said, doesn't have to be any personal, and he seemed agreeable with that.
I agree with you, let's, let's wait, then. I make a motion.
Go ahead.
Close session.
He's, um.
Second.
Like I said, I just don't think there's people beating down the door. Because the, the va, I mean, the value, we're, we're the best prospect for the value. I mean. You know, so.
I think his, his biggest issue is giving up the dream that he had, and all the things that we were talking about potentially doing this thing. Are all things that he wanted to do, but just could never have the capital behind it. So I mean, I think that's part of why there's this resistance to let it go on his part.
And he cut him off the money, good.
Roll, roll call.
Sherman Belt.
Alright.
Supervisors Groby.
Aye.
Salt.
Aye.
Man.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, gentlemen, say shit.
Thank you, guys.
Bye, guys.
See you.
See ya.
See you, Matt, thanks for being here.
Absolutely. Thanks, Matt.